Thank you. We'll see how this works if you can hear me with the mask on. Welcome to the city of Marshalltown City Hall Chambers, 10 West State Street. Today's date just scrolled ahead of me, but I brought my own, which is July 27, 2020, at 5:30 PM. And with the call-in instructions were already posted for those that would like to call in. Looks like we have four people who have availed themselves of that. Thank you, everybody, for wearing masks now that it's required to wear masks in city buildings. And at this point, let me give a notice to the public, and that is that the mayor and council welcome comment from the public during discussion of agenda items. To do so, you are required to step to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, limit your time to present your remarks to three minutes or less, so others may be given that opportunity. Speaker shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council, not to any councilor specifically. It's at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments, or to have the staff respond during the meeting. Now that we've been called to order, would those able, please join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam temporary clerk, would you read the roll call?
Yes. Cahill, here. Goudy?
Here.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Very good. That takes us to item E, which is mayor council and administrative comments. Years of service, we'll delay until we have those present. Does any of the, would any of the councilors like to make any comments?
Your honor?
Ms. Johnson.
This is not official, but I was told today that the grocery store, and this did not come from the owner, this came from one of the contractors, they are targeting an opening of Labor Day over here for the new grocery store. So just pass that along to everybody. That's good news.
Very good. Thank you. It's been kind of fun to watch it out the window here. You can see the backside of it, anyway. Any other comments by any of the councilors? If not, madam administrator, do you have any comments tonight?
I do not, your honor.
I don't either. Not that I've run out of people I'd like to feed, but frankly, I'm hungry. It's been a long day in the emergency, not in the emergency room, in the hospital. Sharon broke her wrist yesterday, so she has surgery tomorrow. So let's get on with the consent agenda. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve it.
I move for approval.
Second, your honor.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good. Jessica, if you'd read those for us, please.
Yes. Approve the minutes from July 13 of 2020 in the bill list in the amount of $1,771,904.89. Receipt of the June 2020 building permit report. Appoint Raymond Starks to the Board of Adjustment. Approve tree trimmer licenses for Ledford Tree and Lawn Service and John Harding. Resolution directing the distribution of sale proceeds from the sale of the fire station. Resolution declaring certain property surplus property and authorizing the sale and disposal thereof of a John Deere 2012 X748 and cab. A resolution accepting bid and authorizing the purchase of two 2021 Ford Interceptor Police Package vehicles from Jensen Ford for the price of $67,776 for use in the Police Department as emergency response vehicles, and declaring certain surplus property and authorizing sale and disposal thereof to Jensen Ford and 2016 Dodge Charger for $11,000 and a 2017 Ford Explorer Police Interceptor for $9,500. And a resolution accepting the assignment and assumption of the offer to buy real estate in acceptance for 12, 20, and 26 East State Street from Landover Corporation and Flint Hills Holdings to Marshalltown Lofts LLC.
Very good. Thank you. Let's go on to motions, then. Would you read the first one?
Yes, we have a request for new liquor license privileges for the Casey's General Store at 1,009 West Lincoln Way to include carryout wine, including native wine sales and Sunday sales.
Anybody want to approve that?
So moved, your honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good. Any discussion?
Was that second, Goudy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I know sometimes the chief has asked if there's any reason this should be on our radar.
No, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Nothing from the chief, negative? Any other discussion or comments? Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Oh.
Isom?
Yes.
Thank you. On to item H, resolutions. Would you read the first one?
Yes, the resolution confirming the appointment of Alicia Hunter as Marshalltown City Clerk.
I move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just say that, you know, we had an application process that resulted in a very good group of candidates to interview, and between an interview panel that consisted of myself and councilmember Isom, and then an interview panel that consisted of the department head team. Alicia was a hands-down unanimous vote for everybody to proceed. She's been with the Police Department for 16 years, and she brings a wealth of experience and knowledge about the city operations with her to this position. And so I highly encourage your approval of this resolution.
I got to sit in on three of those and familiarize myself with the fourth, and I got to tell you, the competition is really stiff, so to get a unanimous vote on that one is something. And I've already apologized to the chief of police for stealing from his department. Let's go ahead and call the roll.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Your honor?
Yes.
We have a projected start date?
August 3.
August 3, okay. Oh, you did say that, sorry.
I just realized that funny noise was my mask touching the microphone. Sorry about that. Let's go on to the second resolution, please.
A resolution authorizing a grant of $48,000 to Garland and Julie Shaw-Sow for the shared wall improvement at 116 West Main Street.
So moved, your honor.
Second.
Let's go with Martin on the tie. Any discussion? Roll call. I guess I should have asked for a public comment. How many have we got?
We have eight online currently.
If I could see them, I could kind of gauge whether anybody wants to open this up for 10 seconds or not.
So I have to go back to that one because I transferred controls to me here on this one, so I can't show you the list at this point.
I am betting, well, I'll ask for a public comment. We didn't get any written comments about this.
No.
Okay. I'll just ask for a public comment up here, then, and not open it up for the telephone folks. Seeing nobody rising, let's go ahead and vote.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. On to the third resolution.
Yes, a resolution forgiving a $400,000 loan made to West Town LLP for the construction of the West Town Apartments.
Is their motion approved?
So moved, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Any second?
Second.
Very good. Any discussion?
Your honor, originally, I was in support of this, but I did some more research, and if this loan stayed as a loan and was repaid, we're talking about some sizable sums of money that would go to the other taxing entities as well as us. I got information emailed to me from the county, and if we forgive this, we're talking about $58,000 that would go to the county, $176,000 that would go to the schools, $147,000 coming to the city, $15,000 going to Iowa Valley, and, you know, a couple small ones. I guess I'm at a loss, I wish Jim was here tonight. I'm at a loss as to why the loan can't be repaid out of the proceeds of the sale of the building. So I guess I'm no longer in favor of forgiving the loan. I mean, I guess he knew what it was going into it when it was changed to a loan. I don't want to set a precedent, and as we move forward through COVID, money's getting tighter for everybody, and we're going to talk about some big sums of money tonight. I just cannot longer support this. Thank you, your honor.
You're welcome. Anybody else wish to comment?
Could I?
You may. Ms. Rup?
Our second last meeting, I don't know if it was Jessica or Diana, said that there was, this money had never changed hands, was never on the books. Is that correct or incorrect?
It's, so what it was is we had the development agreement with him in 2002, and ultimately, the $400,000 was paid out in 2004.
So he received the money?
He did receive the money, yes. And the money came from the downtown urban renewal area. It was something that was certified as a debt of the district, which you can do when you have a development agreement or something that does create a debt, basically.
And wasn't that advice of either council or tax council, they, at their own request, they asked that it become known as a loan instead of as a tax abatement matter?
Yeah, that's what Jim had expressed at the last meeting, and I could find some documents, you know, showing that this original request that came in 2002 from Jim Clark was for it to be as a grant of $400,000, and as he shared last week, that he had to change that to a request for a loan due to some different financing issues with the project back in 2002, 2004 timeframe.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions by the council?
Well, I would just like, I guess, more information than about it to understand the situation better. So I move to table this.
I second.
Let's go ahead, and unless there's further discussion by any of the councilors, we can vote on the motion to table.
May I ask a point of clarification, your honor?
You may.
Bethany, I want to apologize. I should have forwarded this email that I got. I mean, I got it right before the meeting, obviously, this afternoon. I apologize for that. What more information are you looking for? I guess I'm curious, I mean, I would like some more information, too, but I'm curious what you would like.
Yeah, I'd like more background on what in the world happened before, because it was before my time on the council. So I'm just curious. I want to make the right decision, so.
I also have some questions, your honor, that, and I don't know whether these can be answered tonight, as to what, is the loan just now going into repayment, into the repayment phase?
No, the loan does not have to be repaid until, I think it's January 1 of 2034. So there's no repayment, no payments due until 2034.
And was there an early payoff clause?
No.
So even though the figures that you provided, if he sold it and said, okay, here's the $400,000 for the loan, we're not going to see anything more than the $400,000. Is that correct?
It did say that there was supposed to be interest accrued on it as well.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get at, whether it was just starting in repayment or whether that had been accrued already.
So my reading of the original agreement is that there would be interest accruing from, I think it was November of 2002, when the original promissory note was signed.
Okay, so that has been accrued. That answers that one question.
Your honor.
Ms. Thompson.
So point of order, everybody. When we move to table it, it's done. No more discussion.
It's true.
That is true.
That's okay.
Yeah. For the first time in a long time, I'm missing Roger Shell tonight. But thank you for that.
I'll try to fill in. I'm just kidding.
There you go. Yeah, let's go ahead and vote on the motion to table.
It can, clarification, is it to table it until the next meeting to appoint definite?
That's what I was going to ask for, yes.
Is that good with the second as well?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Sorry, Beth.
That's okay.
Okay, Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Am I voting on tabling, or?
Yes.
No.
Isom?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
It does pass four to three to be tabled.
Table, table, do this. On to the next resolution. One able.
Resolution approving contract change orders number 16, number 32, number 34, number 36, number 37, number 39 for the Veterans Memorial Coliseum renovation project, an increase of $65,821.79.
Entertained a motion to approve.
So moved, your honor.
Thank you.
Second, your honor.
Very good. Discussion?
Your honor.
Ms. Martin?
This is a very important project that is looking for a successful completion, and these change orders, which I really don't care for, as far as that in general, are necessary. I was able to tour the Coliseum last Friday. I saw what is needed. I respect those recommendations. They need to be done, and they need to be done right. And now is the time to do it, and I would hope we would proceed with this.
Thank you.
Jeff Hubbard, Parks and Rec Director. I did send out a memo to everybody last week and kind of offered everybody to come take a look at it and see. Most of the change orders that have come through have been smaller ones in nature or ones that definitely needed done to make sure the building was sound, sturdy, functional, that type of thing. But change order 32, obviously, is a big one at $53,000 for the drywall. So in the email I sent you, had a bunch of pictures in it to kind of show, but I think coming in person helped some people see. But where the stage wall is and used to be, and the balcony wall where it used to be, now when you go look in there, and all those walls are bare, there are five different types of brick and block and wood and metal and things, and just covering up with paint, I think is going to make what is a great building now not look all that attractive. And one of my concerns is, was we were going to replace the murals back on the block wall that's there now. I don't think that it would adhere to that. It needs to be more of a smoother surface, so we asked the contractor to give us a couple options, and I think this was their best price, was what it would be by hanging on some high-density drywall on it and adhere it right to the block wall, so that the block wall itself would give some protection to the drywall and not just be like a studded wall where there was a gap in between it, so if a ball hit it, it would cause a dent in it. So again, I, this is one that I, I know it's a big change order, but I think if you were to see what the whole rest of the building looks like, I want to make sure that the gym and every, all the other places look the same, so.
So I came out and took a look, and I guess I'm just concerned about the drywall because it's still an uneven surface, right, behind it, unless you plastered in and patched the uneven part. So I'm just, I guess I am concerned that it will break and crack and...
Well, all those holes that are there, they're big enough to be covered with block, will be covered with a block, and then those smaller ones will be patched, maybe not with plaster, but some thing to make it as smooth as possible before the drywall goes onto it. And that's included in the price.
If we were to just do plaster, do you have any idea what it would cost?
I don't. We reached out to Chico Delorio, and he was hopefully going to get us a price. He called back today and said, I'll have it for you tomorrow, so I won't know until tomorrow to do this. So, I mean, that could be an option, and we could approve it, and knowing if the cost was cheaper, go that route. But I just think having some sort of smooth surface to cover up all those differences in the wall and having something clean would be a lot better than anything. So I mean, I'd be okay with if the price came in, going that route, but I, but he wasn't able to even guarantee that he could fit it in in the next six weeks when we needed it to be done by, so we could finish the rest of the project. And I did ask, when you and I talked, we talked about, well, maybe we just wait a couple weeks. Well, every, like, two weeks that we wait for something costs us about $10,000, and Garland's cost just to be in the building, so longer we wait on some things is still going to cost money.
I guess I just don't want to redo it a few years from now. That's my concern. I want to do it right this time, and I don't know what the better solution is. I'm not, I don't have a construction background.
Your honor?
I'm going to very courteously disagree. Jeff and I talked, not only do I want to approve these, but I want them to, and I don't know if drywall's the answer, you know, or if it's a harder material, you know, I'm assured drywall will be okay. I want to see the whole gym look as nice as the rest of the building. I would like to see all the walls, and Jeff and I disagree on this, if I can put words in your mouth. I think we should go a step further and do all the walls the same as we're doing the two, you know, where the balcony was and where the stage was, so we have a really clean, uniform, finished look in there. I don't want someone five years from now or three years from now to come in and say, oh, what'd they do, run out of money, and they just painted this wall. You know, if we're going to finish it and make it a gym, I think we need to go all out, and, I mean, we're this far into it, we're down the road.
And we're covering probably at least two-thirds of the walls now, so, I mean, $15,000 more would probably get you all the way around.
Yeah. And... Thank you, your honor.
You're welcome. Other questions or discussion up here at the council? Any comments from the public?
So I guess I'm in favor of, your honor, of approving the other change orders, and then it sounds like we just need a little more information, but I don't know. Does Garland, Mr. Hubbard, does Garland have a preference, plaster versus drywall? I mean, is there a, would they choose one over the other, even if it's a little bit more expensive?
Yeah, and I guess my thought is they chose this as the best route economically and, you know, for durability. I mean, they, we didn't, we didn't really tell them how to do it, we just said, we would like to cover this up. How can you do that? So I think that this was their best option for that.
I didn't give you much of a chance between last Thursday and today to follow up with Martha Green and the, I'm ashamed of the lady that was the historic architect, to see if maybe the block part that's actually kind of attractive at the very top would be salvageable and maybe an attractive way to go to.
And that could stay there, just wouldn't, we could choose to not paint it to kind of have that be there, but I don't think that's going to change the cost of anything, and we weren't covering that up, anyway.
Other questions or comments? If not, I'll call for the public comment.
Do you want me to unmute the lines, your honor?
I think on this one, I would. Tell me when, and I'll start counting. Okay, that's a full 10 seconds. Let's go ahead and vote.
Unmuted.
Your honor, just a moment. So could, what would be the way we could settle the change orders except for this one and still get this one approved before our next meeting?
It would be having, well, so there's kind of a few different things you can probably do. You could conditionally approve this one, knowing that if there is an estimate that comes in tomorrow for the plaster work that is cheaper, you can authorize the Parks and Rec Director, city administrator, to execute that change order. I would say that the other option would be holding a special meeting to consider that specifically. I think the point that Jeff is really trying to drive home is that we don't want to wait another two weeks for a decision, because that's two weeks more that we're potentially adding to the timeline of the project, an additional $10,000 of general contractor costs.
Right. Yeah, I appreciate that. So I'm not necess, I'm kind of with Gary on this. I just want to do it right, and I want to make sure that it lasts, because it's going to be a long time before we're ready to redo those walls in there. So I would rather either do all in what Gary wants, or plaster whatever would look good, and maybe that's the entire gym, too. I don't know. But I'd like to know what, how the costs break down. And it may be that plastering will last longer, and it costs more, but it'll last longer. I'm saying the same thing. I don't mean to repeat myself, but, so I don't know how to exactly make that motion, but I definitely want to approve this, and then, I guess, amend this piece of it.
So I think it would be amending change order number 39 to provide the Parks and Recreation Director the discretion to make the cost-effective selection based on the quote to be received.
Yep.
Change order 32.
Oh, it's 32?
32, yeah.
Okay.
And I guess if the, yeah.
And I, we will be having a few more change orders, although I think this, now we're down to just the little things, but it could be addressing a change order, the, if we can, if we can make it up at last, we'll get a credit towards, I mean, we have a couple in here that show up as credits, so we could have change order 40 that's a credit for the difference in wall, or change order for a little bit more, because we're going to do the whole thing now. So it would show up to then, so you guys could see the, you know, the amounts and everything.
You were thinking it might be $15,000 more, so could we just say up to $70,000 on change order number 32?
Are you meaning...
Before we have to have a different...
Are you meaning $80,000, 65 plus 15?
Oh, sorry. Oh, I thought it was 53. I was just looking at change order number 32, your honor, which is 53,000.
Sorry, you're right.
So we could say up to 70,000, you have that, before you have to come back with more information? Is that to get a vote, I guess?
Yeah, I'd recommend that if you want to exclude that one tonight, that we're setting up a special meeting for later this week to take a vote on something when we have the other quote available. Or amending the motion to allow the Parks and Rec Director to make that decision on that one, up to a certain dollar threshold, if that's your prerogative to do that.
I don't want to be the only one talking. What do you all think?
Do it sharp. I don't think there's any reason to hold back with regards to quality of work that's seen throughout the rest of the building, so, from having a bunch of plaster in my house, in an older house, drywall's a little easier for maintenance, longer term, down the road, at least based on the projects I've had at my house. I don't know, I prefer drywall, but I'm not looking for the cheaper option. I agree, I'm looking for the longer-term solution that's not going to have a time to revisit five years from now. So I don't disagree with that. Now, I guess whatever that answer is, I don't know, but I'm all on board with whatever it is to remediate or eliminate that portion of the conversation. So I guess I'd be in favor in amending it to, not to exceed amount, if that's the conversation, and doing the full wall is what Gary had originally proposed. And if we think it's 15, there are a little buffer on there, so it doesn't have to come to a special meeting, would be my preference, but...
Anybody else want to have input?
Your honor, I just, I just, if we're going to go that direction, I just want to say, I want to leave some freedom out there for Martha, you said her name was Martha, right?
Yes.
And Jeff, I mean, I don't want to, you know, I mean, I'm, by no means are any of us the experts on this whole thing, and, you know, this was just a conversation that Jeff and I had today when we walked through there. You know, I just, I guess I don't want to force the committee that did all this hard work, you know, just to do something because I want it. I, I mean, I'd like to give Jeff the freedom, you know. We're saying this is a maximum amount, you know, you guys figure out what's the best look architecturally, aesthetically, what's gonna work. I mean, I guess, I mean, is that okay? I mean...
It's okay with me. So we could amend it to be a, not to exceed 75,000. Is that enough?
I would second that.
Want me to consider that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, that is considered a motion to, uh, I think we've got a motion on the floor, so that would be a motion to amend that motion to not to exceed $75,000.
On change order...
32.
32.
On change order 32. And there's a second, any other discussion?
Who was the second? Thompson, okay.
Roll call.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion to amend passed. Do we need to vote on the motion as amended now? I assume. Okay. Let's, unless there's any discussion about that, let's call the roll on that one.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Okay, very good. That carried as well. Onto item number five, which is a public hearing. Would you read the item and I'll declare it open when you have?
Yes, a public hearing and resolution adopting tentative resolution providing for the vacation and, vacation conveyance and transfer of title to the alley here and described from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa to Jose Angel Regalado and Adriana Regalado and authorizing execution and delivery of a quitclaim deed.
Okay, I will declare the public hearing open at 6:02 PM. Did you receive any written comments to the clerk's office?
We did not, Your Honor.
Are there any public comments? And I guess on this one, I'll open it up to the telephone or internet folks as well. Let's go for 15 seconds on this one. Tell me when you've muted.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Okay, that's an opportunity for those that were participating that way. Any public comment here in person?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. I'm not against him owning the alley, but in the past, our policy for selling alleyways is quite flexible. We sold the end of a street to Garrett for a dollar when Hayes and Pfizer's, Deb Pfizer wanted to buy the alley next to their house. We told them it was fair market value, which was some number based on $1,200 acre or something like that. We sold an alley for $500 to the lady that lives across the street from her. So why are we, how do we choose? And why are we giving it away? It is city property. Okay, it's going to generate taxes, but we need a uniform policy for this. And this has been discussed many times before. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment here in person? Let's call the roll.
We still need to close the public hearing.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry, I hit on myself. Actually, it's time for staff review next, if anybody wants to address it.
Yeah, um, so this was a request that came forward to the engineering department looking at where the alley is located. I realize now I did not include any of the previous memos that had the pictures with it in the packet. Ultimately, this is going to be an area that's going to be of high pedestrian traffic moving forward. An alley is a public right-of-way, which means that the city would have some liability for any trip slips or falls in that alley. And so our recommendation is based on just the exposed liability with it being the piece of property that connects his storefront to his parking lot, that there's going to be maintenance and things that need to be done there that we don't believe we'll have the ability to stay on top of all the time.
Thank you. And then, next on my cheat sheet says I should ask for council comments. Anybody in the council wish to comment?
I have one question, Your Honor.
Go for it.
The other businesses in the perpendicular alley, the auto detailing shop, have they had any comments or have they provided any input on this?
There's not been any input received. They still ultimately do have access to their property off of the, the north-south alley. They do. Okay, thank you.
I'll bet they get a lot more exposure once that grocery store opens up too, in terms of people driving by and recognizing what business is there. Okay, if there aren't any other comments, I'll declare the public hearing closed at 6:07 PM. Is there anybody who'd like to make a motion to approve that?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comment? Doesn't look like it. Let's vote.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay, that carried as well. Onto item number six, which is a public hearing as well. Would you read that and I'll start the public hearing?
Yes, a public hearing and resolution expressing intent in determining to enter into a general obligation essential purposes loan agreement in the amount not to exceed 12,200,000.
Thank you. I'll declare the public hearing open at 6:07 PM still. Did the clerk receive any written comments?
Yes, Your Honor, and I have provided that to each of you. In support of this hearing is a letter from Vision Marshalltown.
Thank you. Time for public comments and let's do the same routine where we open the phone lines up and let's go 15 seconds on this one.
The lines are unmuted.
Stopwatch has started. Is there 15? Any public comment?
Muted. Unmuted.
Okay, staff review is next.
Good evening, Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So we started this capital improvement project list back in January and February when we were doing the budget. And now we're almost there. So, yeah, there's four separate hearings. So this item and the next three all encompass this project. There'll be two separate bond issues, one for the tax exempt piece, which is the airport, since it's managed by a third party. And then the second bond that will be issued would be all the other projects. You will remember, let me bring this up here. Um, you will remember that, oops, that's not it. That we added $50,000 just when we were, I really got that off, did I? You'll remember that we added $50,000 to the total when we published it in the newspaper. So you can reduce the loan amount by that amount. There's nothing that's come to pass that we missed when we advertised it. So, any questions on any of this? Thank you.
Thank you. Any council comments? If not, I will declare the public hearing closed at 6:09 PM and solicit a motion to approve.
So moved, so moved, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second, please.
Thank you. Further discussion? Since we've already had public comments and staff review and council comments, let's take the roll.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Okay, very good, that carried as well. I think I forgot to say the time, didn't I, on closing?
Nope, you did, Your Honor.
Okay. Need more coffee. It was a long day in the hospital. Item seven for the public hearing, would you read that one, please?
Yes, a public hearing followed by a resolution expressing intent in determining to enter into a general obligation railroad quiet zone loan agreement in an amount not to exceed $615,000.
I declare the public hearing on that one open now at 6:11 PM. Did you receive any written comments?
Yes, Your Honor, there were two written comments that were received, the one being the letter from Vision Marshalltown and then the second being a letter from Kading Properties, LLC.
Thank you. Any public comments? And on this one, let's go ahead and open the mic again for 15 seconds.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
There's our 15. Any comments from anyone present in the room?
Muted.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue, thank you.
Unmuted.
Last October, this issue came up before the council and the council voted it down. So it's back before us again. Rolled into this is a trail crossing on South Sixth Street to a trail from nowhere at the moment. And there is, according to the city code which we're using, or the Iowa code, 38426, it's possible to protest this with a public petition. It says that the 10% of the signature, 10% of the people who voted, good thing we vote, have a low voter turnout, is 300 people who can petition this proposal and bring it to a special election. If the council's not going to keep, is gonna keep bringing this stuff up when the city wants it, or when the people want to vote it down, are we gonna really have to resort to petitions? And you don't have to answer my question according to council rules, but there's a timeframe in which to turn those signatures in, 300 signatures. And I take it that they must be turned in before the special meeting, which is gonna be scheduled, I guess, later this week. I'd like clarification on that if possible.
Yeah, so the petitions actually have to be turned in before 5:30 today. And so any petitions that were not turned in by 5:30 today cannot be used to support a referendum.
I'm glad for that answer because I was gonna say it's the second time in the meeting that I missed having Mr. Schell here to give legal counsel, but...
And I should clarify too, that is Bob Jostin with Dorsey and Whitney is our legal counsel for any bond issuances. And that was information that came from him last week when we first learned that there could be some individuals who were looking to collect the petitions for a reverse referendum. We provided, he provided guidance. If you read the public hearing notices that were published in the newspaper, it says that they need to be received by the time the, the meeting were to start at 5:30 PM tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments by the public who are here and present? Any staff review needed? How about council comments?
Your Honor?
Ms. Martin?
I do see the advantage of moving ahead with this. I question the timing. And each little thing that we add to a bond issue adds up to big money. I'd like to see more space between some of these things, more coordination and better understanding. The housing development has yet to come to fruition. We had a referendum or at least an opinion poll from the public initially and they turned it down. And we dismissed that somehow. I am not in favor of this particular one at this time. I do reserve some support in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council comments?
I think with some of the continued investment specifically in the area from Kading Properties and otherwise, um, partnership and having an interested party to continue to develop housing within Marshalltown, uh, to continue to spur some additional areas that keeps people both local and rather than commuting, let alone any of the additional safety conversations around it. I understand there's some sway back and forth between those that either appreciate the trains that have been here for quite some time versus those that, uh, see it as a hindrance is back and forth. I don't know which way I go, one way or the other with regards to that, but if I look in at somebody deciding to spend some money down in that area for people to live, to drive some growth within the community, I see that in itself as a good reason to push this forward.
Thank you. Anyone else from the council like to address it?
Your Honor, just to kind of expand on, on Gabe's thoughts, also, I'd had a conversation with Carrie Kading a couple times now and, and although their decision to move forward is not based on this quiet zone, but she has written us a letter in support. Two reasons, I, I was on the side of vote this down before, but I, two things entered into that and one was just exactly what Gabe said and the second one, the interest rate of 1.3%. Knowing and concurring with what Mr. Martin said, we seem to bunch things quite together. But I think at this time, she has indicated to me that everything is on go with them. So, that being said, to spend millions of dollars in the city of Marshalltown and her thoughts of not trying to put any pressure on us, but it evidently, eventually comes down to something like that of, of, I guess, a back scratching, but I think it still warrants our consideration to pass this.
Thank you. Other council comments?
So I'm still in favor of this project, have been since, well, probably before I joined the council. So it's been a long time and there have been many people wanting this. I know there is a vocal minority. I do not, I do think there is a quiet majority of people who would like to see this project. Just, they're just not super loud about it. And we have the opportunity to do it and it's, it's that partnership with the railroad that has been lacking in the past and now we have the opportunity to do it and make it happen and I think we should do it so we don't miss the opportunity.
Anyone else on the council?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir. You may.
Couple things. I want to take responsibility for this even coming back. It's my understanding, and I want to address Mr. Eaton's comments, it was voted down by a previous council. And then I joined the council and it's my understanding by our own ordinance that when a new council is seated, things can be brought back. So I made it a new council, so it obviously can come back. But I want to take responsibility for it because when we had the strategic planning meetings, I was vocal about, I want the crossing at Second Street closed because I think we're playing roulette with little kids' lives that are crossing there to go to the Aquatic Center. I never mentioned quiet zones and I think we put it on the strategic plan as railroad safety, you know, but that was my intent. So it's my, I guess it's my fault this is even back before us. I can't support this because my, here's my real fear. Well, first of all, I grew up in Marshalltown, I grew up a half a block from the railroad yards. I mean, I lived with the sound of the trains, you know, it's what built Marshalltown, you know, I'm used to it. I understand people that come to town aren't used to it. But my real concern is where do we draw the line? If it's the trains today, then when do we go to the veterans' home and tell them that they're whistled in the morning and at noon and at 4:00? When do we silence that for that neighborhood? You know, when do we silence the church bells on Sunday mornings and mass and everything else? You know, we already silenced the courthouse clock way before the tornado because some people complained. I mean, where do we draw the line? To me, this is like taking down statues. That doesn't change history, doesn't change who we are. So, I guess I'm, I'm... statues. That doesn't change history, doesn't change who we are. So I guess I'm, I can't support this, because it's, I don't see it for, I think we've lost our train of thought on this, sorry about the pun, but that it's no longer a safety issue, it's become a housing issue for some developers. And I just don't want to go down that road, because like I said, I don't know where we draw the line and what things we silence. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Your Honor. So I guess, I see it as multifaceted. I think it is a safety issue from a certain perspective. This Kading development is newer to the conversation, but I think it is applicable, directly applicable to what we're talking about. I think the noise is compared to some of the church or veterans' homes being up in the area is a little bit different from how clear and how loud. It doesn't necessarily affect me, but the hindrance just being at the softball diamonds and a train going by is quite extreme, or let alone little league baseball or anything else. And from a business perspective, when you have clients that will no longer stay downtown or otherwise because of certain things in proximity to that noise, you have some, you have some hurdles in place that maybe those in town who have been here for a while are gotten used to, and honestly, doesn't bother. Like I said, to me, the noise isn't necessarily a large bothersome, but I completely understand those that have that perspective, and I don't disagree with it. And so that's why I land. I get what you're saying with regards to some of the other noises, and I brought up that example in the past with regards to maybe some other things that we should maybe evaluate for noise ordinance, but I think this is at least a step in the right direction specifically to this bond issue. So I'm obviously in support of it.
Has any consular not yet had an opportunity to speak about this issue?
I am in support of the motion there. We, from, back when we first started talking about it, from the safety issue, that was the main concern. And the fact that the construction, the housing project is going in nearby is kind of a bonus, but I was not using that to affect my decision. I've been for this since we started discussing it, and I will continue to be for it.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, the public hearing is closed at 6:23 PM, and let's call the roll.
We need a motion and a second. First, Your Honor.
All right, sorry. Then, okay. Public hearing is closed at 6:23, and now I entertain that motion.
It's a move, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I'll second. Go ahead.
Goudy, okay.
The guy with the mask.
The guy with the mask.
With the Hawkeye mask.
Are you ready for the roll call?
We are.
Okay. Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Weirin?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Would you like my opinion?
Oh, Cahill.
Cahill, yes.
I apologize.
Stand up, Sue.
We're so glad to fire you on, what, August 3rd?
Yes.
Sorry. I'm not talking.
The motion is approved, Your Honor.
And having been short all my life, the standing response to that joke is, I am standing, dammit. So, okay.
Getting a little testy in here tonight.
On to the next item, please.
A public hearing and resolution expressing intent and determining to enter into a general obligation tennis courts loan agreement in an amount not to exceed $700,000.
All right, that public hearing is beginning at 6:25 PM. Did you get any written comments?
We did not, Your Honor.
And it's time for public comments. Let's start with the phone again and go test 10 seconds, since nobody's chimed in yet.
The phone lines are unmuted.
10 seconds is up. Public comment from anyone here in the public?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So again, this one was voted down last October, and then the school system decided to proceed with the tennis courts, but they broke it into two phases, phase one, phase two, so that they could afford to do it themselves. They are their own taxing body. They can generate their own tax revenue for this project. In March, this council voted to, on a resolution, a 28E agreement with the school, promising to give them $684,000 for their project, but could not do this until July 1st, 2020, because we didn't have it. And now we got to vote for it. And we got to have a public hearing in order to vote for it. So this public hearing seems to be, the results seem to be foretold, because you voted to give it to them already. So that makes this public hearing a farce, illegal. You don't care what the public says. And so what do we do with this? Maybe we should vote this down and save everyone some face, and we should look for this $700,000 somewhere else. Since JBS just donated $2.7 million to the city, maybe we could get them to give the $700,000 to the school system. They have done that on public projects in Minnesota. The rec department in Minnesota got a million dollars. So I think we should vote this down for those exact reasons, not because I don't want the tennis courts to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, I guess, nobody else from the public is here, so let's go on to staff review. Anybody wish to speak?
I will say that, you know, just to clarify, that all along as we had talked about this project back in March when the 28E was before you, we had talked about it in a way that our intention was to borrow for it. And it certainly does still require a public hearing, just as anything else does, but I believe that we'd been clear from a staff perspective with you all along and with the public that our intention was to bond for the project. And so that's what's here before you. Ultimately, if you decide not to do it, we still do have an obligation to meet. I can tell you, JBS did not grant the city of Marshalltown any, any of the money that they're receiving. That's their money to allocate, and ultimately, you know, we'd certainly like to be part of that, but it is not money that came directly to the city, or at this point, we have any indication will be coming directly to the city.
Thank you. Any council comments?
Your Honor, I just have a question, if I may.
You may.
Do we, did we get the cart before the horse? Do we have a 28E agreement, though, with the school district?
Yes, you have a 28E agreement that requires us to contribute $684,000. So it was, it was not a cart before the horse thing. It was, if you recall, it was a budget discussion where it was part of the budget. We had included it as part of the budget, and then immediately following the budget discussion and approval of the budget, of which you included that item, was the 28E for that. And so it was a time in March where it is my understanding that you all were fully aware that because we'd included it in the budget as bond proceeds and funding it with bond proceeds, and then had the action to approve the 28E, that that was very clear as to the process staff was going to be taking in order to fund that $684,000.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You have any other council comments?
Your Honor?
Ms. Martin.
Were we not very specific in saying that $684,000 was a finite number, and that we were not going to go beyond that? This says not to exceed $700,000. I think that is wrong.
Yeah. So one thing, so that is, that is from a financial planning and staff perspective. Ultimately, because this is a separate issuance, essentially, it has separate costs to it, like our financial advisor cost, underwriter cost. And so if we did it at 600, if we set the public hearing authority at $684,000, we'd have to pay for all those costs from somewhere else. And so ultimately, you'll notice, it was the same for the last one as well, that there was $15,000 that we built in from what we had originally told you on the quiet zones, and it's the same on the next one as well, an additional $10,000. So on each of these general corporate purpose ones, because they end up having their own costs associated with them, and it's not a big pot of costs together, that's where we were advised to set the public hearings at a higher authority, so that those costs could be included as part of the issuance.
So my recollection comes back to the $684,000 is a firm figure.
There, if you approved to borrow any funds on this, we would only be dispersing $684,000 to the school district. Any, any costs associated with the issuance above and beyond the $684,000 we actually need would be covered by that, that gap between, that $16,000 gap, if needed.
Okay, I understand.
Thank you. Other questions or comments by the council? If not, the public hearing is closed at 6:32 PM, and at this time, if I remember to do it right, I entertain a motion to approve it.
It's a move, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Let's go with Mr. Hoop on the second.
Was it Goudy who made the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Roll call.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. On to the next item, which is item I in the agenda, and that starts with its ordinances, which you read the first one.
We still have one more public hearing, Your Honor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that one. I didn't see that. Yep. Okay. Read number nine for us.
Yes, a public hearing and resolution expressing intent determining to enter into a general obligation, oh, I lost my spot here, a general obligation trail improvement loan agreement in an amount not to exceed $260,000.
Okay. And because that's a public hearing, I have to declare it open at 6:32 PM. Did you get any written comments?
Yes, Your Honor. We received an email from Steve and Janet Radasovich in favor of improving the trail surfacing in the community.
Thank you. Let's go with public comments again, and this time, again, since nobody else has commented by the phone, 10 seconds ought to do it.
The lines are on, muted on the phone currently.
Any public comment from anyone here present? Staff review.
Muted.
I think just to describe this one, as we talked about it during the budget process as well, is that we, we know that there's way more than $250,000 worth of work to be done. There has not been a scope that had been determined. We were really waiting to kind of get through this phase to make sure it was something that we were going to move forward with before starting to dedicate staff time on determining what the, what the areas will be that would be improved.
Thank you. Any council comments?
I've got a question, Jeff, if I could. This is for the Lynn Creek Trail. This is not, got anything to do with headed north?
Correct. Jeff Hubbard, Director of Parks Rec. This would be on our existing asphalt trails like Riverview, out to Grimes Farm, not any of the Radio Tower Road project. And I guess our plan, too, is we would like to replace, use this amount to replace whatever we can with concrete, and then our guys are going to do some crack sealing yet this fall in, in the areas that we are not going to be fixing with this to help type, to kind of extend the life of, of the ones that aren't as good.
Thank you. Other, other council comments?
Your Honor, if I may. Jeff, and I want to clarify, because the question's been brought up to me by some citizens, is this isn't adding any trails. This is just repairing some really bad spots that exist in the existing trail.
Correct.
I'm following up on Mr. Hoop's question that, I mean, we're just, we're just fixing some dangerous potholes, basically.
Well, and cracks. I get people that are riding, and they call me and said, if I were wearing dentures, by the time I got from Riverview to Mega 10, my teeth would have fallen out from all the bumps. So Timber Creek Bridge has been my number one phone call. Trails has been my second biggest phone call. So we're, we're going to be addressing as much as we can there.
Okay. I suspect that a lot more letters were received by consuls and by the mayor this last week than, than were actually posted to the clerk's office. And that reminds me, I should tell the public that if you want to be considered, if you want to have your opinions considered as part of the record here, those need to be addressed to the clerk of court, not to the city consuls or to the mayor.
City clerk, not clerk of court.
Did I say clerk of court? Oh, my God, that's my day job. Sorry. I haven't seen one of those for a while either, though. It's not since March 14.
I did get several phone calls and emails as well to expressing concern and also support for it.
Yep.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Yep. Other council?
Thanks, Jeff.
Other council comments?
Your Honor, so I guess just a curious question. Is there already a list that's formulated, a prioritization of where on the trail or otherwise? I mean...
So the ADA study has pointed out a few areas, like around the OVH Park. But then, but then most of the trail is listed as whatever the middle one is, so it's going to be then, I guess, up to us to where we think is the worst. The other part of the thing is, too, is how certain sections of the trail are going to be hard to get to for a contractor, which is going to up the cost, so might try and do some more accessible areas. But I mean, if you drive from Riverview to out to Grimes Farm, I mean, every 20 feet, there's a, there's a linear crack that, that is being affected. So like I said, we, there's not enough money in there to do it, but we're going to be trying to be in a, that's why we, us and the engineers are going to be going out trying to figure out what's the worst section that needs to get replaced or the most bang for our buck.
No, I agree. I'm out on the Riverview all the way through most of town every weekend, and there's a lot of room for improvement around there. So it's exciting to see this. And like the mayor said, probably one of the higher traffic items I've had in a long time as far as the amount of feedback and support I've gotten in doing this specifically. So it's well overdue.
I bet the public would be willing to call you or email you with their ideas about what the priorities should be, too. I bet Steve would do that for you.
There's a lady at the Legion who, every time I stop in when I'm golfing, has to tell me about her place that she would like to see fixed. So I'm sure I have way more spots than we have money for.
There's one spot down by the bridge, or by the, by the bridge at the Lennox, the Lennox facility, visited about, and I'll have to watch that one when I'm driving by on the bike.
Yep.
Okay. Any other council comments? Let's declare the public hearing closed at 6:38 PM. Is there a motion to approve this?
It's a move, Your Honor.
Second.
Let's, let's...
Was that Thompson and Isom?
Let's go with Mr. Martin. Mr. Isom's already on the record.
Once again, it was the guy in the mask.
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. That carried. On to the next ordinance, one you're able to catch up.
Yes, an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances by repealing sections relating to bankrupt stores and public sales.
I move for approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, just to clarify on this one, because there were some questions earlier. This is, this is something that is keeping basically some existing language that is in chapter 118, which is our peddlers and solicitors chapter, but amending and renumbering it to remove any reference to bankrupt stores. So as we looked at the, the public sales chapter, we're getting rid of that completely. And then there's other sections that we're remending and repealing that had to deal with the bankrupt stores in chapter 118 as well. So there's a few different things that are going on there. The memo, I thought, explained it quite well when you, when you looked down and saw what was, what was proposed... Yeah, just to clarify on this one, because there were some questions earlier. This is something that is keeping basically some existing language that is in Chapter 118, which is our peddlers and solicitors chapter, but amending and renumbering it to remove any reference to bankrupt stores. So as we looked at the public sales chapter, we're getting rid of that completely. And then there's other sections that we're remending and repealing that had to deal with the bankrupt stores in Chapter 118 as well. So there's a few different things that are going on there. The memo, I thought, explained it quite well when you looked down and saw what was proposed to be changed.
Has this been enforced in the last two decades that you know of?
Kmart, when Kmart did their going out of business sale. And I can tell you that at that point for Sherry, it was a hassle to try and get certificates of insurance and everything else. And so for the $25 fee, it really was not worth the time to do it.
Okay. And out of curiosity, does it empower the city mayor with any new rights or powers that he didn't or she didn't have before?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't ask for a public comment.
That's okay. I know you're tired hearing from me. This is Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So in, I'd just like to mention some things. Bankruptcy is still mentioned on the application in the header. And in the code that was presented in the packet, everything referred to the city council, not to the mayor. Now, maybe the old code that's posted in there is different than what's online, is different than what you're, but the council gives all applications to tree trimmers, cigarette licenses, or tobacco, alcohol, everything else the council gives the licenses for, not the mayor. This one is for the mayor for some reason. And we know the mayor is overburdened with work. We've heard that several times. And so shouldn't this really be a council issue? Shouldn't we put it back to the original code where it was before, where it says the council does all this? Thank you.
Thank you.
To, just to clarify, that's not correct. That ultimately, Section 118.028, which exists today, is being renumbered to 118.014. And that is where that it basically provides that the, basically that the mayor can endorse any transfer of a peddler, solicitor, and transient merchant permit. And so that's all in Chapter 118 as it exists today. What's being struck is basically the bankrupt stores out of that because that is not there. So if you look at Section 118 dot 028 of the current Chapter 118, you will see that the mayor currently does have the authority to authorize the transfer of a peddler, solicitor, or transient merchant license.
And to the extent that any record has indicated that the mayor is overburdened, I would like to dispel that notion. Have not been. And I can imagine that over the next year and a half, and if I seek reelection after that, for the next four years after that, this will never come to light. And if it does, any mayor ought to be able to figure out whether a permit should be transferred after doing a modicum of research relying on staff. Let's, unless there's any other comments by the public or council, let's take a vote on this one.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. And next, and looks like last of the ordinance items, please.
Yes, an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances, City of Marshalltown by amending Chapter 77, parking schedule, Schedule 2, no parking anytime. This is related to no parking along the north side of East Lynn Street from Center Street to South Third Avenue.
I move for approval.
Second.
I don't anticipate discussion on this one. Let's just call the roll.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
I feel kind of bad for not asking if there was any comment. Would anybody like to?
A little late now.
Okay, yeah, sorry. All right, discussion items, first one.
Yes, so it was requested that we bring this one to the next agenda. It was kind of out there for your information last meeting. And so what we did this time was we did put together, and I'm going to see if I can open it up from here. Oh, it did open up. Okay. So as we reviewed the strategic plan internally, we did want to make sure that we did bring some items to your attention, which we feel at this point really do need some more guidance on. And so I want to focus on those items that are in the memo. But ultimately, we are open to answer any questions that you might have that are available. And so as we looked at goal one, there were definitely some things that we had been successful on and that had moved forward. But there were a few things where we feel very stuck at this moment with COVID-19. And so specifically, those things are the ones that we highlighted them in yellow, which Councilmember Thompson asked why they're not in red. And depending on where we go with this, they could end up in red for the next period as well, depending on what action we have. So I've been very liberal with my coloring so far.
Inside the lines.
So kind of the first one is the downtown design standards. And so I think within that agreement with Bolton &amp; Mink and Slingshot, we had some sort of public engagement that was yet to be defined. And at this point, we would really like to hear from the council as to what sort of public engagement you might like to see, knowing that we're in a time where things are very limited. And Michelle is here to talk about things too.
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. Yeah, just kind of to summarize a little bit where we're at and what we're thinking about with the design guidelines. Bolton &amp; Mink and Slingshot, the architectural firm that works with the historical side of some things, has been working on some drafts, looking at our current information that we have, taking the downtown plan that we completed, building off of that. We're at a stage where we are proposing some more targeted outreach with what I'll call stakeholders. So the different organizations that we work with related to downtown, probably some of the business owners that have been involved with some of the activities over time and in planning, and to get some feedback specific to certain things that they've been looking at. We recognized right away that we had a lot of larger public input through the downtown plan process related to design guidelines. So we didn't feel like there was a need to do kind of that more general input, because we had done a lot of that through the charrettes and all the public meetings that we had when we were doing the downtown plan. So they were able to take a lot of that research and stuff and build off of that. We certainly will want to make sure that the guidelines are out and engaging with like the Main Street Group, with the commission, and with anybody who has, you know, interest in those, the business owners. But maybe not necessarily needing to do kind of those open house focus groups like we've done in the past with some things, because we really did cover a lot of that with the downtown plan. So that's kind of where we're at with things right now. And we're trying to draft and move forward. But I think just kind of, it's just, you know, making sure that we're meeting your goals as council too and seeing this. We know that these are big topics that come up when we talk about design guidelines and standards, especially in the downtown. And so we want to make sure that everybody's getting that opportunity to input on things when they come up and how we do that best. So that's kind of what we're proposing at this point. Certainly, any ordinance changes require public hearings and meetings with the planning commission and the city council. That wouldn't change. So we would have those opportunities. It's more on the additional, how much more additional during COVID especially, are we going to be engaging or waiting for?
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Michelle?
I, yeah, Your Honor, sorry. I guess I just want to make sure that, I don't know what's all entailed, because it's been a while since I looked at the downtown plan. But I guess I want to make sure that with everything that's gone on, that's going on, that we don't put undue burdens on existing downtown businesses. And so I don't know how dialed in all of them are with the plan, but it probably would be good to maybe cover some of that with the downtown Main Street Group anyway. And I don't know what percentage of downtown businesses are part of the Main Street Group. So I don't know if that's going to hit everybody. But I'm sure there are people that are interested in moving those forward. And then I'm sure that there are others who are thinking, I'm fine with that being for new businesses, but I don't want to be involved. You know, I don't want it to come back on me to add something at this point, because it's kind of, it's a tricky economic environment right now. So I guess just kind of balancing all of that, I'd like to make sure that we don't move forward with something that's going to put a big burden on people.
And I think in all of our, you know, because that's obviously a big comment that comes up whenever we're talking about any kind of code changes, is how does that impact your current versus moving forward? And I think this is no different than in many ways. When we talk about a guideline of this, typically, historically, what we have done is this applies moving forward. So, you know, business that goes to redo a facade, to change something, to build new, you know, those kind of things are going to be what's subject. The idea of taking something that's existing and making them make changes is not where we have gone nor intend to go with any changes. So it typically is always going to involve when the owner is pursuing something themselves, that then we want to try to incorporate whatever design guidelines we can. So that allows for those ones that are existing to not put a new burden on them with a change in the code. I think it also, we certainly will want to engage, you know, in terms of letting people know that this is a proposal that's out there. One of the other changes that we've talked about a lot is the difference between the overall central business district and the historic district, which we have, which was that smaller, more refined area within our downtown, and what those guidelines look like. Right now, all of our stuff applies to everything in the central business district. Whereas if we, what we've talked about is having some distinction between the historic district and the broader central business district. And that some of those more conservative, more restrictive things when it comes to design that would apply to are truly our historic district, we have those into account versus maybe some of that, what I'll call the outlying of that area. So it, there are differences between depending where you're at, how that would look. But the intention would be for those moving forward at this point. That would be what we tend to do with things like this.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Michelle, with what you said, all the information you have from the charrettes and everything, are you close to being able to put something together to come to us with a plan for, and I like what you're saying about different standards for the historic. My only fear there is it's going to be cost prohibitive for people to build the historic looking versus, you know, but I mean, I'd like that you put different standards in place for the historic versus the central business district. But am I hearing you correct, that you're ready to come to us with?
I would not say ready.
Okay.
You can't see my smile and my grin underneath the mask. But I would not say ready, but I think we're getting closer. So I would say probably maybe two or three months out before we're bringing it to the commission. So hopefully by end of calendar year, let's say, we would be able to have hopefully a final product that's being able to be approved by you. So keeping in mind that, obviously, we're talking about three readings and public hearing at the council level, two meetings with the commission, so that's two months. So it's going to take us a good four months to get through the formal process. So another month or two of work.
When would you be ready to come to us just as a report type item?
I guess this would be probably our closest report. Yeah. And then I think once we get to a point where we, where Bolton &amp; Mink and Slingshot have had a chance to really talk to some of those stakeholders and run some different ideas, and we've had a chance to review more of a draft, take it to the commission, probably for a work session even before setting up public hearing, getting some vibe there. We hope that, of course, everybody would feel free to engage in that process. You know, those meetings were, we haven't had a commission meeting really throughout COVID. And so we just had, I think, one board of adjustment where we did do the go-to meeting as an option. And so we would look to those as well. We want to give people a chance. We'll probably try to do more online interaction as much as we can to give people a chance to look at stuff, make comments, rather than kind of, like I said, that open house session, if that's agreeable. Otherwise, I feel like we need to wait.
So what I heard you say is we, as a body, can hold you accountable to give us something before the end of the calendar year?
Yeah, yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
And I think we, we as staff would like to hold all of you accountable to participate in those planning and zoning sessions, so that it's not just a brand new topic when it actually does get to you. So I think that's going to be the really the formulative time where your comments will probably matter most in keeping things on a track for approval. Because I would say if we get to the council level and you're not in agreement with what planning and zoning has brought forward, we're then back another three plus months or so.
I agree. I hear what you're saying, and I agree.
I meant that in a nice way. I was smiling behind my mask.
I know you were. And I just, I just want to say, I know we, years past, we've gone down paths similar to this. And tactfully, I'll say that we haven't put any enforcement behind some of the things that occurred in the downtown area. Am I being too nice or too vague, or?
I think that, you know, we have guidelines for the downtown, and we have worked within those well. A lot of things at times, you know, can be very broad and subjective. And so that can be a challenge. And so part of the things that we've talked about with the consulting firm is that very issue, is it needs to be something that is able to be enforced and addressed by, you know, people like myself and our planner, who are architectural historians, who, you know, can look at it and say, okay, this is what's required, so that the business owner that's coming forward can understand. So we've talked about using more graphics, you know, with things, visuals to make it easier to understand. So that's definitely something that we're trying to work into any changes that we have. There may be some portions that are code changes and other parts that are guidance, you know, that aren't necessarily written as code. Yeah.
Fair enough. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Your Honor.
You have other council comments or questions, suggestions?
Just make sure we get those meetings on our calendars.
Sign up for the notify me section on the website.
Oh, I get them.
For everybody, for everybody in the public. We encourage that.
So the next item under that first goal, which also comes back to Michelle, is right when COVID hit, we were ready to have a public hearing on creating a mixed-use zoning classification, as well as then applying that classification to a large area of the Highway 14, Third Avenue corridor. And so that has still been on hold. And Michelle has outlined some options there. And we're wanting to know where you would like us to proceed at this point.
So just kind of to summarize again, and I outline those, what I saw is kind of three different options in moving forward with the mixed-use district. We were very close to having that hearing right before COVID hit and just felt that it was appropriate to hold off. I think given everything, we know that this is a big project and a big scope of change. And so we wanted to make sure that we were giving that opportunity. We had had a lot of public comments leading up to that point. And so that was important to us and still remains important. So I felt that in looking at this topic, there are a few different ways that we can approach it. We had a very extensive area that we're proposing to change with the mixed-use district. We can, breaking it out kind of into three different ways, we have the district text language itself, which is not an existing district. The mixed-use district does not exist currently in our zoning ordinance. So this was a creation of a new, a new classification, as well as changing of properties from one zone to another. And so I think the first option that I outlined would be to move forward with the text-only portion of the district, to really establish that, hey, this is a district we want to use. That part doesn't necessarily have the impact on individual property owners right away, which is what, of course, causes a lot of the engagement, right, to happen with owners as they want to know, well, how is this affecting me? The adoption of the district itself would put that zoning classification in place that we can then assign it to properties as we determine to be appropriate. So that's kind of one option, is to move forward text-only. as we determine to be appropriate. So that's kind of one option is to move forward text only. The second, second option I outlined was to move forward with the text and the rezoning of some key areas that we know are maybe more likely to transition sooner or high priority areas. Um, some of those could include areas that we know are already vacant and ready for redevelopment, or maybe sooner to be redeveloped within the next year or two, um, and kind of more focused, um, and, and really targeting on some of those that we, that we think are priority. That would have, um, be an easier one to engage with those owners and let them know, hey, this is something we're proposing that does impact your property, um, to get that input. The third option is to kind of move forward as we had been planned with the larger extensive corridor. Um, knowing that we were getting a lot of comments from, from different owners, um, some, you know, some concerns, some things we were working through, some changes we were making. And so I, I think that that is one that we would expect larger, um, participation with. And of course, during these times, we know that that can be a challenge, and we don't want, um, that to become a problem down the road that we haven't heard that. So, um, I think if you were to ask me which one, I think we definitely want to move forward with the text. I think it is important to maybe hit some of those key areas um, as we talk with developers and we're looking at areas, if we can say we already have this area rezoned to a mixed use, it, it provides for a lot of those steps that, that they don't have to do, um, when they're ready to develop. So it makes us more developer ready, um, in some of those key points that we can. And again, we can reach out to those specific owners and hopefully have that, um, willingness as well because it improves their marketability of properties too.
That's my favorite option too, number two.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Beth.
Oh, sorry. That's, number two is my favorite option also.
Thank you.
Michelle, with regard to number two, when you get into mixed use, I know we've had some examples in the past, and we're living with a couple of them now, where something like a pharmacy was next to the hospital and it turns into a tobacco, alcohol, that would seem to be incompatible, or let's say a dental office, uh, next to an animal shelter or a junkyard. Can we avoid that on this corridor thing?
Yes, certainly. Um, within our, the zoning ordinance includes a table of permitted uses and special uses. And each district outlines which uses are allowable, which ones require special use, and which ones are not permitted. Um, the commission had several work sessions, uh, leading up to, um, the almost public hearing of this, where they went through line by line, each of those various uses. Um, we started with our traditional neighborhood district, which is an established district right now, and as kind of a most similar type of, um, comparable district. And so we started with that and went through and said, okay, are these uses that we want in this new mixed use district or not? So we, we did go through those extensively, um, and to try to, to try to account for what things are going to be compatible. The, I think one of the things that we see with the mixed use district that, um, is a little bit of a shift in our thinking than we have maybe done before is a lot of the times when we get complaints and, and things and issues about uses, it's not as much maybe the activity that's occurring as the outward appearance of a property. And so focusing more on some of the design elements and aesthetic features and those kind of components, um, within the district and I'm not going to say eliminating or not worrying about the uses, but maybe less focus on some of the activity, whether, whether you sell ABC or XYZ, it, it's still, it's still sales. And how is your, how is your operation appearing and functioning becomes more what we get complaint typically of. So, um, within that district text language, that was something we tried to address that way, still being cognizant of what, what things are, are truly incompatible, right, that we don't want the junkyard right next to this. I mean, those are, those are clear things. Um, but there are some things that maybe are a little more gray sometimes, and it depends on how that operation is, is being handled and how the, um, aesthetic of the property is looking in terms of its design.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Do we even know what the street plan is yet for, I'm just thinking, I'm not so much thinking Anson Street to the Viadoc, but more of the Viadoc all the way to the river on the north. I mean, do we even know what the lane assignments are yet?
Um.
To know what we really should be putting in the mixed use area or allowing?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that the, the plans that we have discussed with regards to the road, um, I won't, I won't say they're not relevant to this because they, they are. Um, but at the same time, I think when we're looking at the mixed use district too, I do see that this district could be utilized in other areas of a community besides the corridor. So I, I mean, I think that a lot of the efforts that we've had on the discussions on the corridor in terms of the road lane and stuff has moved forward as a, as we've discussed previously. Um, we're certainly waiting on some grant applications and such to see how that will progress, um, with the DOT. Uh, so we talked about those in the aspect of, in the mixed use district, we try to pull things more forward to the lots rather than the front parking. It's more about parking on the sides, on the rears, more encouraging the pedestrian, um, uh, access and, and things to, to buildings. So we were taking that kind of thought into consideration in talking about the district rules.
So they go together, but you're not letting one hold you up?
They're not necessarily, yeah.
And then my second question is, with what's happened downtown because of the tornado, do we really want to provide an avenue for businesses not to relocate or to locate in, in downtown Main Street? I mean, this mixed use plan would actually open the door for people to put their businesses on Third Avenue versus Main Street. Am I correct?
Uh, no different, I feel, than what it is now. Um, so I think in some ways you'll find the mixed use district maybe more restrictive than what's currently zoned on the corridor. Um, and so in the, in the community commercial district, for example, which is a, a portion of the corridors, community commercial, there's, um, little to no design standard. Um, the uses are very open in terms of what is allowable. This mixed use would actually refine a little bit more. Again, not affecting your existing things, but for new development, um, is going to put a little bit more restriction, um, than what is currently on there. So I don't, I don't feel like they would be a, a competitive type of thing. No, I think we'll be okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Other, can I ask her questions?
I do have a question, and I may be trying to put a square peg in a round hole, so bear with me. And I'm thinking of some current situations on Third Avenue that I've had, um, a number of conversations with constituents with, where, so when we're talking about the design, are we only talking about the street front design? Or does it enable the entire, um, property that they have? And currently, some situations are residential's butt up against, um, maybe up, uh, auto sales and repair. But yet what's, it's on the frontage might be okay, but what's back on the alley that's budding up against the residential is not, in, in their terms is not. And so is that, like I said, or when we're talking about the design, are we only talking about the frontage or does it engage the entire property?
Um, some of the stuff that we have worked on, and, and with this district too, we're proposing, uh, more graphic interpretations of some things to help out. Um, and we do address some of the overall site, uh, what I'll call site layout type of things, which could address maybe like, you know, when people are coming in and parking, especially if we're trying to push maybe parking to the side and rear, how do you buffer to protect those adjoining properties from headlights, right, and, um, or things like that? So screening and buffering, landscaping, some of those kind of features that are more site related than building design facade related, um, are included within, within some of this. Again, you know, will that have an impact on your existing situations? Not necessarily because we're talking about moving forward. Um, some of those issues we have to deal with, with some of our other means, um, of enforcement. But, um, the idea would be to really think about the collective site, um, as part of this, um, and how sites relate to each other. A big thing on the corridor is that access and not having driveway, 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 and trying to reduce some of that and having shared parking, um, or shared access points to parking. So it is talking about how to kind of address that more as a development.
Thank you.
Others?
Your Honor, so you're looking for a direction from us, I know.
I, I heard, I heard Bethany likes number two.
I, I would, I would agree with, with, I'll, I'll go on record, I agree with that. I think with the COVID thing and, you know, that's, that's an easy way to move forward because you've already, you, you, I think you alluded to, you've already started some conversations. So I, I would support that.
I'd see no issue with moving forward too. I mean, answered some of my questions on why we weren't possibly recommending three as the first choice. So I, I don't, I, I guess I'm aligned with regards to why that is.
Yeah, I, I, I think we, it, it, that was a lot, as we found as we dove into it, it was a lot. Um, so I think this will be a good stepping point for us.
Do we need, do we need a motion then, or just, is that enough to direct you?
I, I think, um, as I, so I've heard three people say number two. Is there a fourth that says number two or some head nodding? Okay, if that's the desirable choice, then that's what we'll proceed with, knowing that we were, we were basically at the point of having a, a public hearing. And, um, I think that we'll probably.
Probably come back and, and revisit a little bit of those and target down some areas and, and be back with our commission. We had not planned on maybe go straight into a hearing with the commission because it has been so long. Um, we'll come back with, with maybe one more general meeting, maybe even two, as we kind of refine what exactly those areas are that we're gonna, we're gonna focus on and before it comes back to council. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you. And those sessions of planning and zoning will probably be made available by a go-to meeting as well, and so we'll make sure you have all of that information and can stay connected with what that discussion looks like. Um, so goal two, there's just kind of one area, I mean, obviously anything where we were planning to do anything that is onsite, uh, with people in a room, we have canceled, which is mostly the citizens academies, those two items. Um, but then also one of the new things that we tried to look at for this year was creating some training for, uh, some nuisance enforcement for neighborhood, um, groups so that they can be more of a help to us getting the information we need the first time, rather than us maybe having to have two or three conversations or visits to be able to verify that. And so while that is under, under development, it's not something that we'll have ready to roll out into a group setting, um, this year at all. Um, one of the things that, uh, we, we do have in there, and I think it's more of a question coming up with some of the other ones of, we would have looked at local option sales tax being a funding source because we don't really have any room for anything new in our general fund budget, was a community-wide citizen survey that would involve multiple partners. Um, it, there's a few things, one being the intended funding source having some instability at this point. We'll likely know in the near future kind of what our outlook looks like for this, um, next calendar year or for this current calendar, or current fiscal year. Um, but then also, you know, is, is now a good time to try and get feedback from people? And so I guess we're just kind of, I, I'd like to know your opinions. Is this something that we should just put on the back burner for now? Or is it something that we should still continue to work on and moving forward with?
Your Honor? I mean, as I've already shared, I think community-wide citizen survey feedback in generals, always a good idea regardless of the timing. Um, there's things changing all day, whether it's one day or two years ago, it's tornado, or another day it's COVID, or, so I, I don't know that there's ever a right time to do it or not to do it. Um, I guess my biggest question is, is there a previous example from a previous survey we've done that we're looking to mimic? Um, maybe possibly understand, is there changes or otherwise that would make sense to do to a prior version? Um, or just what that looks like and what, I guess, the objective of the survey is? Um, and how we want to slice and dice or want information to help slice and dice that information to really provide some, a platform to drive some yays or nays into some of the decisions we're making up here based on that. I, I guess I'm, I'm just looking for what it's going to look like, and at the end of the day, how is it going to be useful to us?
Yeah, so I think, um, uh, I would recommend that this is something we can talk about in depth, so I can bring it back as a future discussion item. But my, my thought was that maybe there would be some questions from previous surveys that we would include, but to use an outside service that is not just allowing for anybody to provide input, that is doing some random selection. And ultimately, any firm is going to have their own process for determining how they do random. You know, is it cell phone? Is it email? Is it something, you know, different than that? And what does that, what does that look like? But that's where I would like to go with. It is a random sampling of the community. Um, it's not just a, a, you know, a, a targeted throw out there and let's get as many responses as we can. So, um, there are some companies that do this. Um, there are some that do this for other cities in Iowa. And so I, I can certainly bring back some information as a future discussion item to give you all a better idea of what that could look like or, or what's in my mind as what this would look like.
So I guess my only ask is if there's some sample companies that already do this. I assume they have a sample data set or something else as far as what that output looks like. I'd be one of the requests I have to be able to see if, as a part of a future conversation.
Yeah, yeah. And one, the one that had come to my mind that I know a few cities in the Des Moines metro area use is ICMA, uh, which is the International City County Management Association. And basically, they, they then use it to, you know, take your demographics and then compare you with cities of like size demographic, or like size population, like demographics across the country as well. And so they offer kind of a, a wider data set because of the contacts that they have with multiple cities. But there are definitely others beyond them too, so. So I will put that on my note to bring back to a future meeting for discussion, just to give you guys some more information about it, and we can talk more about it at that point. Um, so goal three, um, you know, we've, we've gotten some things moving on that. This is that goal, that's that internal look of trying to, to move things forward. Um, there's a few things again where I think we need some direction that, you know, it can be like we just did. It needs to come back to a future meeting for discussion, or we can talk about it tonight. Um, the first one was, uh, we had, um, through kind of the downtown master plan process, there was a larger recommendation of needing to rewrite our zoning ordinances. I think the consultant that we had on that one gave us a two out of 10 in terms of our entire zoning code. And so, uh, local option sales tax was the intended funding source there. Um, again, we're wanting to know, is this a, uh, proceed? Is this a delay until we know more information? Or is this a, let's put it on the back burner for a while longer?
Got a quick question, Your Honor? So I guess maybe as a whole, we re-scope it a little bit differently based on situations of dollars that are going to be required to do it all versus pieces of it. And that being said, is there pieces of it that get us from a two out of 10 to a four out of 10 versus a three out of 10? I mean, I, I'm just saying, right, biggest bang for a buck is there are certain areas that would be more appropriate to focus on to start with if we do re-scope it. Maybe, maybe the entire thing is the answer depending on what the dollars are. I guess I don't know what that looks like, so.
Yeah. Uh, again, Michelle Spahnheimer. Um, you know, I, it's a good question. We, we have piecemealed in a way through our ordinance uh, for a long time, um, in updating a chapter here, a chapter there, a section there. Um, and, and I do believe that it is time for us to do a pretty major overhaul. Um, in part, it's really hard when you do do that piecemeal to make sure that you catch everything and don't conflict with each other within the code. And, and so that part of it, um, I, I do think when we do it, we really probably need to, to go all out. Um, I think we can put it off some if, if that's the desire of the council, um, you know, to do to all the other things going on. We, we have a lot of other things we're focusing on, certainly. Um, I, I don't know that it would be beneficial to just say, well, let's tackle like chapter one and two and, and see how we do. I think it needs to be a comprehensive look.
I guess the biggest thing is to get an RFP to at least give us an idea of what it's going to cost, I guess I would be in favor with. I mean, I think that's an appropriate next step to understand if that's in, puts it in the scope of the next year or into a later discussion again.
I think we had budgeted 75.
It was, it was a big number. I, I think we can pull what some other recent, um, costs have been for Iowa cities. You know, Michelle brought up the, the point, which is, is one that I think if, if we get through the, the design standards and the, you know, rezoning, creating a new classification, that's stuff that's already done that we don't then have to put on pause or move forward or, you know, try and, it doesn't enter in conflict with what we'd have a consultant do. So there is still a possibility that we could do this in this current fiscal year. It just might not happen before December 31st of this year. Uh, we'll also know about local option sales tax more here in the near future too. But we can certainly get you some cost estimates of, of what we think it would be.
So kind of along those lines, bang for buck, is this something that would really help us into the near future with development? Um, or is this, does your department have? Or is this, does your department have time for this right now?
Well, that's certainly why, you know, we need to go out, outside of the department, for the bulk of it. Knowing that that will still take a lot of time of staff. But I, I do think we can handle it. Caleb Knutson, our city planner, who's on board, is really doing a great job in catching up with all the things, and I think would be able to handle this, of course, with, with me on it as well. So I think we can, we can handle it if we decide to move forward with it. I do think there would be a lot of benefits that would come from it. We see that, you know, the planning world is constantly changing, and the expectations of developers are also changing. And so certainly, as we start talking about things like parking and signage, and, you know, buffering and landscaping, and all those kind of things that come along with development, and even the topics that we don't have really covered right now, like solar and some of those kind of things that are changing so fast. There's opportunity for us to have a better ordinance that would be what I would consider more friendly for development, while still getting the goals that we have as a community prioritized and clear, so.
That, that really became clear to me during the whole U-Haul discussion. And looking at pictures of the facilities other places, and what they were asking for us to do. And it just seemed like we could have been a little, I felt like we were more back on our heels than we could have been.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree. I think we've had a few, a few of those kind of topics over the past few years, where, you know, we felt, it was, it was a little bit more reactive to issues than, than really being thoughtful about how we want our development to look, and being ready to address those from the beginning. And I think as we're seeing more mixed development, and that's kind of the mixed-use district that we've talked about earlier, as we see more development occur, and some of those larger tracks with those mixed opportunities, we want to be ready for those, so that when the developer does come to the table, we can really say, well, this is what we've thought about. Our plans do a lot for that, you know, I reference those all the time. And so know that those are worthwhile documents and processes that contribute to things. But I think having it within the code just takes it that next step further.
Your Honor?
Mm-hmm.
Michelle, so would this zoning change go into some building code things? Like, do you see that you would, you would open up some zoning for tiny homes, low voltage usage, so, like you said, solar, wind? You know, I know we have, you know, we have caps on some of that stuff. I mean, I, I'd like to see our zoning get us out of, have people having to go through variances for everything.
Certainly, and we actually see, we don't see very many variances anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, that's a good thing.
Yeah, it's, it's, we don't want to hinder development, but at the same time, we want, we didn't like-
Correct.
Like Mr. Martin said, you don't want that junkyard next to your house, and we're already seeing, you know, things in neighborhoods, but.
Yeah, I, I do, I think it will allow us to address some of those what I'll call trending activities, you know, that do take kind of center stage when we have discussions about them, and be prepared for, for them. You know, some, from, from the tiny house to what you see now, the, oh, I can't, I can't remember what the term, I just saw it, but the garages that turn into, you know, the residuals where it's more garage than house. You know, those are kind of constantly changing things. Another topic that we've had at several webinars on these past six months, because everybody, that's what everybody's doing right now, is the accessory dwelling unit. So kind of that secondary unit, the grandmother's cottage kind of thing, you know, is, is a hot topic right now.
So you see this as opening up some?
Some of those discussions, and we've seen that the, you know, Des Moines area just recently went through some big zoning changes, and they had tackled some of those issues. Cedar Rapids presented at the last planning conference about their zoning process that they went through, addressing some of these things, and how they really looked at zoning as a whole for their community. And, and a change, a change in mindset in a lot of ways, in some of our traditional things that we've been doing for 70 years. So I, I think it would open up some of those discussions in any way.
I'm surprised no one's approached about shipping containers yet, you know, putting them together.
I didn't say I haven't been approached about those.
I guess I like what Gabe was saying, if you can get something, get something for us, so we know what we're, you know, like, what, what Bethany said to the bang for the buck, and what Gabe said, you know. Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, we'll come back with information on that one too, to a future meeting. The, the kind of final one that was in goal three was talking about enforcement of our odor standards and the nuisance ordinance. And so this is something that we do see as needing some, some more discussion and direction from the council about what your ultimate goal is, so that then we can work with legal counsel to figure out the path to get there. And so I don't know if that's something you want to share tonight, or if that's something you would like to come back to a future council meeting with discussion on, and, and kind of have further, further discussion.
Pick me, pick me, Your Honor. May I?
You may.
I'm gonna paraphrase this by saying, I really appreciate JBS donating $2.7 million to the city in whole.
Community.
Community. Yeah, not city, but community. But at the same time, I'd like to see them pay, if they're not gonna fix the odor problem, and I'm picking on them, because I think that's the biggest abuser. It's my understanding, the way the nuisance ordinance is written, if I walk outside and I can't enjoy my livelihood, that's a $750 fine if it goes beyond a month, you know, or maximum of $750 fine. And that's every day for every issue. I'd like to see them pay us $750, 30 days a month, 12 months a year. You know, I'd like to see us move forward with this with our guns blaring. You know, because until they feel it in their pocketbook, they're not gonna do anything, in my opinion. So thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome.
Your Honor?
Sorry, sir.
I think this goes, I mean, it's its own topic, but I think it also ties well with regards to some of the repair and otherwise, with the trails discussion. I can tell you, going out in the morning and going for a bike ride or a run, and not only stuck a bone over the cracks or the holes in the trail, but having to breathe in some pretty thick air at times is quite unenjoyable, in my opinion. And it doesn't really matter where you're in the city, if the wind's blowing right and the humidity's just right. It is absolutely atrocious, and I agree, of utmost respect to some of the things that have been done from a community engagement. You speak of the quality of life and some of the other things that we talk about on a pretty frequent basis, this has a direct impact. More than most anything else, in my opinion, as far as being able to walk out on your front porch, your back patio, what have you. Go collect diamonds, go to the, the racetracks, and have to have a stench that is somewhat unpleasant. For everybody's awareness, I've sent more than a few links of other instances in different areas throughout the United States, either directly related to JBS or otherwise, if we're gonna relate to them being the, the main point of this conversation. There's things happening other where, I mean, so I agree that sticking to our guns and putting a plan in place to address the issue, and at least have a conversation, if nothing else, needs to happen. And it hasn't happened, at least that I'm aware of, since I've been in the community. So I'm looking forward to seeing what the partnership that they already have in the community and with the city can progress the conversation into.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Your Honor? I have seen recently, I have had more comments about this happening on individual bases than the large corporate. And I do feel that, I, I appreciate the work that goes into dealing with nuisances. And what, is one person's nuisance, maybe for me, it's like, no big deal, no big deal. But I do feel that we should have maybe a stricter enforcement policy, where you're given two weeks to get done whatever it is, whether it's weeds mode, I mean, we, we have, we know the scope, and maybe that's too long of a time, but I do think that we need to, because sometimes we're too nice. We want to work with people, we don't want it to be an issue, but I think occasionally we get, we get kicked a little bit as, as we're turning, turning around, because then the job doesn't get done. And then that leaves other constituents who are taking care of their properties, their homes, their, their surroundings, they get very frustrated. And, you know, I was asking, you wouldn't want that next to you. You're right, I wouldn't, whether it's a house that is decrepit, or yards that are not cared for. And again, I've tried to help them go through the right channels and all. So I do think that we should look at our enforcement of our nuisance codes, and just maybe have a more universal, this is it, this is what our, our plan is, you know, you get a, an issuance, and you have a certain amount of time to fix it, and if it's not fixed, then we move from there.
And I think we do, I, I feel that we do have a lot of consistency when it comes to those. We have some standard responses, depending on the type of nuisance that it is, which are, which are just static. Now certainly, as people call and report, say, here's my situation, here's this and this, we have that ability to say, okay, you have another week, or whatever, to get something done. And I think that's an important piece. You know, I think when it comes to, more specifically on the odor front, you know, that's a, a conversation that I felt, we, we do address those on some individual needs, you know, you've got a heaping pile of trash, that's an easy one, where it becomes offensive to the smell. Certainly, looking at the larger industry, impact is one that we felt warranted, that larger conversation, to make sure that how we're gonna go about treating that and moving forward. We want to make sure that if, if we're gonna pursue some enforcement mechanisms, that, that full support of the council is there when that time is coming, and provides that direction.
Yeah, basically, if your goal is for us to proceed with what we're allowed in our ordinances, which is to file a municipal infraction, we need to be prepared on the upfront, that you're committed to a court process, and that we have done what we need to do as staff in terms of due diligence, data collecting, and other things, to be able to present a case to a judge that has any weight to it. And so that's, that's kind of where we're at, and sort of, we don't want a, a foo-foo process, where we're just sending out notices for something that we're not intending to follow through with, that, that never works. And so we, we just want to make sure that everybody is kind of on the same page. And I think if, if that's where everybody's at, we can certainly bring back probably sort of a recommended process, and what we would need to do. There could be recommended ordinance changes, or something that would come along with that. But I think we can bring that back to you, if that is where you would like to see us go, is that we're enforcing our ordinance regardless of whether it's a single property owner, or the, a corporate entity.
Your Honor? Question and a comment, if I may. Has JBS ever been fined by the city? I mean, I see the odor reports, we get them. I mean, I, I walk outside myself.
I think what's important to understand too about that process is, although we have that ability to find, like you mentioned, the 750.
Maximum, yeah.
That is through a municipal infraction.
I understand.
Through the court, and so there's nothing that we, we can't just send a notice and, that says, you now have, you owe $750. We file that infraction and go through that process. So to my knowledge, we have not filed any kind of infraction during the tenure that I've had nuisance control under, under my authority. You know, we do, we have, over the years, worked, there is the odor control. We have relationships where, when we get complaints, we've called the staff there, you know, ask questions, like, well, what kind of smells are you seeing? Where is it at? Where, I mean, there are processes that JBS does in trying to respond to, depending on different types of smells, as I understand it, and I'm certainly not a smell expert, but that they do have people that will actually like, try to verify, okay, that smelling sweet, or this is this, or that, or whatever. They can identify different processes, as I understand, in their, in their production, as to how that impacts us, to where they maybe need to add a certain additive, or something of that nature. So, you know, it's a big process. I am certainly no expert on what JBS needs to do in terms of control of those things. I think, in my mind, it would be a conversation, you know, with that corporation about what, what options there are to learn more about that, and how, how we can best address it.
To be a good corporate partner with this, or city, community partner with the city.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Michelle. My, my comment specifically for you, Jessica, what you said, you know, about, you know, if you bring it to us, you don't want us to leave you out there on an island. I've said it before, if we have ordinances on the book, I expect them to be enforced. And if you come to us and say you can't enforce an ordinance, then we as a body need to take it out of the, you know, either rewrite it, or take it out completely. But I, I mean, I, I say this before, I'll say it again, I will back you on anything on the books, you know, personally. You know, because I want a better community. Thank you, Your Honor.
Can I comment?
You may.
Quick, quick, easy one. We, up until recently, we had quarterly meetings with JBS. There was a group, I think Mr. Gotti was in on it, the previous mayor, maybe Bob Schubert. They went quarterly and met with JBS and discussed all the what-ifs and the problems. And we haven't had one of those meetings for, I guess, I don't know how long. I don't know if you've had one since you've been seated.
It's been probably a year or more at this point, so I think the last time we met was up here in council chambers, and it was cold.
But it, but that was a strong point, because you had that constant communication. I'm not, I'm not saying everything got done, but at least you had the opportunity to voice opinions both ways. And I, I would, I guess I'd like to see that start up again, because I, I think there was a lot of good that come out of it.
And Justin Nickel and I had talked recently, knowing that this was going to be something of discussion, that, you know, we haven't had one of those meetings recently. COVID certainly put a damper on what we could do for the last four months, but that we do believe it is a good idea for us to start meeting. Where we do have an ongoing relationship is with the wastewater department and JBS meeting monthly. I think they went to Zoom meetings once a month, but those have continued to, to happen. But I will say, meetings are meetings. If you're telling us we have to enforce the ordinance, then a meeting doesn't accomplish anything other than telling them we're going to enforce the ordinance. So I think it's your direction as a council as to what you would like us to do, is going to still be the overriding factor there, that is direction to staff, regardless of what sort of conversations we're having.
I have met with the management team, but pretty much individually, I don't think, ever since I got to gavel up here a year and seven months ago, that we've had a meeting.
We, we have.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, like I said, it's, it's at least a year ago, so.
Well, I can interject that I see Todd and Nico quite often, because they do a lot of fundraisers and stuff out at the American Legion. Every time I see them, they want to know why I haven't been to a meeting with them, because I was there quarterly for four years. And they rely on that opportunity to be able to give their input back to the council. And, and I think if we, if, if we jump off the deep end, what I'm calling the deep end, without giving them the opportunity, and, and, and I say that lightly, because they know that they're, they're in violation. They're not stupid, they walk outside, they can smell the, the hog medor and the rendering. So I understand where you're coming from, that if you're, if you're gonna enforce this, I, I agree that something needs to be done. And I would like to give them the opportunity to say, okay, we'll put a million dollars towards, obviously, if they can give, give out 2.7 million to maybe their cause, or the city's cause, or whatever the case may be. These people are multi-billionaires that own this company from Brazil. So they have the opportunity and the insight and the money to be able to cure something like this. And I would, before I jump off the deep end, I would certainly like to say, hey, what's up? You know, maybe, I don't know if it ever has been, you know? Obviously, we do reports and everything, and, and everybody in here has witnessed the, the infraction. And, and I don't think anybody wants to walk outside and hear, and smell this, but it's social media, it's, it's always been on there, and, and it is a problem. And I don't think anybody's gonna deny that, and if we, we make that decision at a hall, I think we ought to be behind it. And I agree with that, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm certain that they would also understand. But I think they need the opportunity to say, okay, we'll do this. And, and if you want to give them a timeframe, give them a timeframe, you know? Jesus, you know, ever since Todd's been there, he's bent over backwards to, to facility- Jesus, you know, ever since Todd's been there, he's been over backwards to facilitate as much money as they can to the community. And I think they deserve at least a, a, you know, a shout-out, if nothing else. And, and, and I don't have any qualms of calling Todd up and saying, hey, I'd like to meet with you. This is our concerns and what can we do? I, I don't have any qualms of doing that with him or Nico or, because we're friends and, and we greet each other as such. And that's just my opinion.
Let me suggest this. I must have been tied up at that meeting or I simply forgot it. But why not direct staff to revive some sort of a meeting, whether it's quarterly or more frequently or less? We can come up with a group of people that would be willing to meet with them. I've been telling people publicly, because the management team has told me that it's public that they have invested $3 million into both water and smell remediation. And so assuming that's true, it has, it is better now than when we moved to town in 1986, better than it was five, 10 years ago. And they've certainly been a better corporate citizen by providing things and fundraisers and that sort of thing since Todd got to town. But it's, it's still a problem for the people and the quality of life thing. And if we're trying to increase the population here, especially if it's going to be on the northeast side of town as we're rebuilding it, we should be in a dialogue with them. They employ 2,500 people, which is about three times the next highest employer in, in Marsh Town. So we should be in a pretty constant dialogue with them. And they also have a corporate membership and Rotary now. And so Nico or Todd or anybody from management can attend those Tuesday meetings. So they're doing outreach, but, but let's get the city more connected with them.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'm going to plead ignorant here. Mike, I know who Nico is and the position he holds, but I'm assuming Todd, the way you talk about Todd, is he the general manager then?
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay.
Nico's the HR guy.
Yeah. What's Todd's last name?
Todd Carl.
Carl.
Okay.
Nico Agüera.
Uh-huh.
Aguirre.
I would volunteer to be on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, we'll reach out and see what we can do. I know it was something that, that Justin had brought up as well, that, you know, we, we really haven't had those, those meetings happening for, for a year now.
Okay. I've heard that some places like Sioux Falls, for instance, there's a packing plant right downtown and they don't garner many complaints. So there may be some mechanisms or, or ways to remediate that we haven't seen around here yet.
And, Your Honor, I appreciate the discussion. Thank you, Mr. Hoot, Mr. Gaudi and all those who chimed in. I, I fully agree that we need to provide a forum to make sure we have clear expectations, that our expectations are that we can remediate the days where the odor is out of control and that we can have a good place to live. And I would think they want the same type of thing, too. So thank you for bringing up those discussions, great plan.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle.
And that really is kind of the end of it. You know, the fourth goal is really one that is more fluid in saying that we'll partner on quality of life issues. And so as we've seen, many organizations reduce what they're able to do at this point in time due to COVID, we're still making sure that we're, we're working with those who we have a partnership with and we're open to working with others.
Thank you. Okay.
Very good. We are at that point of having public comment.
Lost all of our public.
You say we lost all the?
Do you want me to unmute the lines?
We have muted.
If nobody's on the lines, I don't think you need.
We do have people, we still have seven people on.
Good for them.
Okay, let's see how fast I can read the comment I have to, which is that members of the public may comment at any time on any items not on the agenda during this time. Approach the mics, state your name and address, limit your comments to three minutes or less unless I authorize more. Direct the comments to the mayor council at whole. And we may not engage in discussion or debate on those items in order to comply with the public, open meetings laws. Is there any public comment?
I have unmuted the lines, Your Honor.
All I hear is crickets. Let's adjourn the meeting at 7:46 PM. Thanks for attending.